I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, being Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, laws of the state of New Jersey. Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meetings of the Planning Board for the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2018. Has posted a true copy of the schedule on the Bolton Board located at the front entrance of Bell Hall, has mailed true copies of the schedule to the local source in this part of the ledger, and is maintaining a copy of the schedule in Bell Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can everyone please stand to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Shelkey.
Here.
Mr. concern. Excuse me. Mr. David.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Lamalde.
Here.
Mr. Cantina's excuse, Mr. Pinto's excuse, Mr. Ladati.
Here.
Mr. Pellelo.
Here.
Mr. Mazzio.
Here.
And Mr. Jones.
Here. Okay, we are informed to proceed. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the January 11th, 2018 minutes. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes? Okay, have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We have one item on the agenda that wasn't initially there, so I'd mark it as item number five, and that's a resolution. And I guess I can read the resolution. I mean, basically, let's see. Whereas pursuant to the fair and open process of... I'm trying to... Who introduced the...
Me.
Mr. Ladati.
I might say to you.
Okay. Introduced by Mr. Ladati and seconded by Mr. Shelkey. And it reads, whereas pursuant to the fair and open process rule advertisements for proposals were published in the local source and posted on the Borough of Kenilworth website, and proposals were received and reviewed for the Planning Board attorney for the year 2018. And whereas after review of said proposals, Louis P. Rego, 25 Linsley Drive, Suite 200, Morris Town, New Jersey, was appointed by the Planning Board on January 11th, 2018, now therefore be it resolved after review of said proposals that the Planning Board's appoint... Planning Board's appointment of Louis P. Rego as Planning Board Attorney for the year 2018 at a rate of $1,000 per month and $135 per hour for litigation matters as deemed necessary by the Planning Board, being the same as hereby confirmed effective January 1st, 2018. Can I have a roll call vote on that?
Mr. Shelkey?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lamalde?
Yes.
Mr. Ladati?
Yes.
Mr. Pellelo?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, very good. We have formalized the appointment of our board attorney. Next item on the agenda, which was five, and that was actually six, is communications. Madam Secretary, do we have any communications?
No communications.
Okay, then the next item is new business. And under new business, we have an application, number 367-5-19, which is a site plan and variance. And Wanderly Fonseca is the applicant. Are the applicants present?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Step over. Are we okay on notice and publication?
Pardon?
Are we okay on notice and publication? Okay.
I am Meredith Marcus from Haylen Hill on behalf of the applicant. Oh, sorry. Meredith Marcus from Haylen Hill on behalf of the applicant, Wanderly Fonseca. This application is an application for preliminary and final site plan with some bulk variances, which will be described by our engineer at DECK. I don't even remember what's on my notes, sorry. But we did meet with... We had a DRC with both of the professionals, Kevin O'Brien and Victor Benagra, and we went over the plans, made some changes, thank you, made some changes which Ed will also go through, so I think the plans are in pretty good shape for you to look at. Went through all the cakes, so I will not waste any more of your time. Appreciate you coming out on a night like this. And I'm going to introduce Mr. Deck as our engineer.
Okay. Do we have to swear in any of our professionals?
We should swear in both. Both, Kevin. Gentlemen, with regard to this application and anything else that might come up tonight, do you swear that the testimony and comments you're about to give show me the truth?
I do.
Just for the record, that's Kevin O'Brien's, our planner, and Christian, Christian from Arbor Consultants. So you have two witnesses?
Well, we actually have three. So we have David Buckman, who is in Elizabeth on his way here from another application, but he's going to do architecture, so if for some reason we get through this, Mr. Fonseca can also do the architecture, so we'll see.
So you have the applicant, you have an architect.
We have an engineer.
My suggestion would be we swear them in one at a time, so we don't get into the circus.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So Mr. Deck is up first.
Could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application? Do you swear the testimony? I'm about to give show me the truth.
I do.
Just state your name and spell your last name, please.
Edward Millmishel, last name Deck, DBC.
Thank you.
Do you want to... Listen to you if you want to swear in the applicant as well. Do you have any questions?
It's up to the board.
Mr. Rego had suggested we'll do it as they speak, so that's fine.
Obviously, if there's something that Mr. Deck can't answer that Mr. Fonseca can, then we can get him when he testifies. So we're not going to miss anything.
I'm sure most members of the board know that I've been here before on numerous occasions and licensed professional civil engineer and civil engineer in New Jersey. What we got here on the easel is the plan set for 618 North, Michigan Avenue, Lot 12, Lot 2. It's a preliminary and final site plan on Sheet 1 of 4. We have the zoning map, aerial photograph, and a Q map, which shows the various, and we'll have the list of joint property owners of the 210, and our zoning chart, which goes in more detail before we get to Sheet 4. Sheet 2 is a map which shows the existing conditions and the structures within 200 feet of the property. As you can see, the main entrance, as it exists today, is off of North Michigan Avenue. We have approximately five parking stalls there. It's a paved area. There's a small picnic, passive recreational area on the north corner of the property. In the back, there is a paved drive lane with a stone area in the back. There is access to our site, which we are proposing to use through Columbus Avenue. There's also a paved area from Atlas Street that's not used by the applicant, however, it does exist, and in the proposed condition, we eliminate that point of ingress and egress.
Mr. Deck, I'm assuming what you're showing us are the exact dock prints as we have.
That's correct. Let's... The easel's not going to change. It's the same as on the other from the board members. Sheet 3 is where we are proposing to call the improvements. We are proposing a parking area, widening the area, to have five, sorry, 10 stalls here in the front with one handicap accessible parking stall there. It would be one, two, three, four, nine stalls in the front. Removing the location of the entranceway a little further north in the center of the property, so that way the ingress and egress can be... Parking stalls would be easily accessed either to the left or to the right as the cars enter the site. The rear of the property is where the majority of the work soon to take place. We're proposing a one-story mason rebuilding, which would become an integral part of the existing building. Shown on display at the front of the building is a showroom office, and then behind it is the warehouse building. That's approximately 5,700 square feet. In this condition, the office space is about 1,700 for a total of 7,500 square feet. We're proposing to add approximately 4,400 square feet of additional warehouse space. And to accommodate the additional increase in square footage, according to this concern and plus reloading, we are proposing to construct a paved asphalt parking area to the rear of the proposed addition. In total, the additional parking stalls in the back, plus the front, we're proposing to have an additional 16 spaces, and the requirement is 40, so we meet that in the requirement. We are also proposing to have one loading space, which meets the requirement of the code. We are eliminating the access point to our site from Atlas Street, and the access increase egress point would be from Columbus to the rear of the site. We're proposing two underground detention systems in the back, and we're proposing one smaller detention system in the front for the collective runoff generated by the front parking area. All runoff generated from the building, existing and proposed, will be directed towards the two rear detention systems. I now go to Sheet 4, which is the landscaping and lighting plan. Here, we're showing the location of the post lights, and again, as a barrier, visual barrier for that cutoff from Atlas, we're proposing a row of arc providing, plus, of course, the current part of the parking lot. So that will serve as a way of eliminating any type of ingress egress from the street from Atlas. The rear area, we light five wall-mounted LED lights in the back, and the front will also be wall-mounted LED lights in the front. We're proposing a number of different varieties of floodlining plants in the front of the property, and the higher or the wider slope, both sides, to buffer the parking area. The same thing is being done on the south side of the proposed new parking area in the back. We have received, and I believe as the attorney had mentioned, we had met with both the Borough Engineer and the Borough Planner to make this plan meet all of the township ordinances and to make sure that we followed the intent of what the township wants for the gateway zone area. And what we've come up with is taking their recommendations into consideration. And I think the important thing is that when we initially came before both Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Benagra, is we had two variances. It was building coverage, a lot coverage, and I think open space, which is one's reciprocal of the other. So we were able to eliminate that, those two variances that we were requesting. So right now, I will turn back to, I guess Sheet 1, which has the zoning chart. We are only asking for, well, first of all, we have two non-existing, non-conforming conditions, which is street width and frontage, and that's the existing conditions with the lot. The other variance that we are looking for, one's existing, non-conforming, is for the existing building in the front on either side. The side yard setbacks do not meet the minimum of five feet. Again, that's an existing condition, and that's not changing. But the new variance that we're asking for is for the side yard setback of the new addition. The reason for that is we are keeping the building line of the existing building and projecting it further back. So that is the reason for the additional side yard setback on the new building. And the total of the setbacks still don't get up to the minimum of 15 feet, and that is the second variant. I should say, the first variance we're asking for is the total. The existing doesn't really change for the total. We are asking for two, one side yard existing and one total side yard. And those two are the two variances that we are requesting, which we propose site. And the proposed, I'll come back to Sheet 3, before the closing dot is located along the rear of the building. We're proposing to take care of what's stored now on the outside of the building, put inside the building, clean that area, and also the trash will be held inside, where it's stored. Other than that, I think that pretty much explains what we're proposing here and what we're requesting.
Add just a couple of follow-up items that were in the planning report received, updated from Shamrock Enterprises, updated in R6, 2012. Mr. O'Brien asked about the Leconolics, the lights, whether they were put to be in place or were already in place.
Right. The old ones are being replaced. The new ones are being replaced.
Okay. And then the status of the county.
The old one, okay.
The old one.
The status of the county, we've submitted the county application, and I'm not sure whether we received it from the month, but I don't know.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. In fact, I think we might have, because I've received comments back from, yeah, I think we've already received comments back from the county, and we addressed those comments. I'm sure it's been...
There was a letter of November 14th of 2017 from the county directing the applicant to take a number of steps. Have you taken all those steps?
Yes, those are shown now in the planning of the county details, where the current replacement and the pavement replacement.
Okay.
And the site, the site is shown. Okay.
I have no further questions, so I hand Mr. Deck to you.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien or Mr. Cueto, any additional questions or comments before I open it to the board for questions?
If I may, Chairman, thank you. Mr. Deck, the landscaping plan shown to the front of the property has unidentified plants on either side. I picked out the hollies and the junipers, because there's a symbol there that's not shown with the legend on the right-hand side. Can you tell me what those are?
On the right, as you said, before you looked at the... Oh, okay. Oops. I'll just get out here. Why don't we... I say that, it's probably due to the... Right. The hollies there.
Yeah.
So with that, maybe, you know, Suzella, so I don't need to... I don't have that labeled. I could, you know, the board's recommendation or plant's recommendation, we could get something in that's...
And the Zellia that's being proposed can get rather high if it's not trimmed. Would you be willing to revise that front landscaping to something much lower that would allow the building to be visible so that passing motorists can see the location of the business and be able to get in? Usually, we like more landscaping, but in this case, it's got to be visible from the tree. And what they're proposing are landings that I think that are too high, plus the identified plant, which could be a...
Oh, yeah, it could be. Well, Chairman, take the recognition of the town player.
Sorry.
Do you want just gra... I mean, that's up to you, you can discuss it, but if it's just grass, then that's okay. And we've talked about landscaping being a number of plans, and pretty flexible, and we'll be...
This is in the Gateway Overlake District, which this board felt deserved special attention because it's a gateway to the borough, and we wanted to landscape the properties as they came before the jurisdiction of the board. This is an opportunity to make it look nice with an appropriate cost and low cost for the applicant while maintaining good build. So if the applicant is willing to revise the landscaping, if the board wants to put that as a condition, I have no objection.
And before revision, quick, did you have your recommendations?
Okay. With a two-year guarantee, there's no objection to that?
No.
Okay. I also brought up the front facade in my report, page 4, item F, Foxtrot, and that was the existing entry door, which is a garage door shown to remain on the south side of the facade or the left side of the building. Forward of that garage door currently is a loading zone. It's substandard, it makes two parking spaces unusable, but that's being eliminated. So with just grass in front of the garage door, I didn't see the need for the garage door, and perhaps the applicant wishes to discuss that.
Well, I can explain that, most of the applicant probably can give you a better idea of his operation, why he would want to leave that door there. The idea is that the door serves as a means of being able to bring in and take out the displays that are used in the office showroom, and it's easier to take it from here and take it out of the door than through the office and the showroom. So they use that as a way of moving the different types of features that they display in and out of that area.
I'll leave that to the board, whatever your pleasure is. The last comment I had was that the revised site plan shows access to Columbus. Mr. Cueto may have some comments on that, but I'm concerned with that the back landscaping area, the back area would be landscaped with either grass or perhaps another row of arc providing back there. Rest will be of my preference. What's beyond that? Well...
To the left of the property, there's an open gravel type of parking area.
But there's also trees along that boundary.
Might be.
Oh, the trees don't belong to our...
No, they don't.
Yeah.
We'll get to him shortly.
Yeah. I'm writing down the questions, thank you.
Okay, so I'll leave that for further discussion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Deck.
For our letter dated March 4th, 2018, after this question you can answer or this can be left by the applicant, is to discuss the access into the building, who uses, who will be accessing it from the front, and who will be employing the one that will be using the rear entrance on Columbus.
I think that's a question for the applicant?
Yeah, sure, but obviously, the front is all, they use five, the people that'll be coming to look at the showroom, the products that the applicant has to offer. And according to Mr. Fonseca, the amount of people that'll be there, you're probably talking about one an hour at most or less.
But not, but not that will be using the rear entrance?
No, not the, not that portion. They'll be the employees who are using the rear.
Number three of our, of our new letter, do you have any objections to putting stop bars and stop sign that told Columbus and along the...
No objection.
Number four, I'm not sure if there's any other, but this also will... You can also comment on this, what type of trucks does the applicant use?
Well, again, I could answer that, but you can also ask the applicant, are these single duty type of trucks, the biggest ones, so they're either like van type trucks or like a 20, 30 footer most, largest, like a single duty truck.
Do you have any objection to equipment, trucks being template under the revised plan?
I'll put it on here, but it'll be a cake turn type of, you know, configuration.
Number six, any objections to putting all the doorways, all the proposed and existing doorways on the, on the building?
On this plan, I can put that on, but I believe they're on the architectural ones. The existing and the proposed, I have most of the areas in the back, I think I might be missing one along the side here.
I think there's another, it looks like a mag door along the rear.
Along this area here?
Near, near the loading, a day on the same side.
Yeah. Right, okay, yes, there is one along the side.
The scale on Sheet 2, if that can just be revised, this 30 should be 20. The other question that I have has to do with the drainage. You show on Sheet 3, the frequency of the post, however, the post doesn't show that all the runoff is going into the detention. That would lower your post so that the runoff would be less in the, in the post of the grid. And I guess that would just show that your runoff for the site is less after construction, if that can be revised.
True, true.
And for the sewage pits, would recommend some sort of overflow pipe?
We have one in the front. It's recommended by Victor and Mr. Benagra, after we had overflow. But in the back, what we'll have is the pipe, or the system would bubble over through the Atlas, the inlets, and then go out the...
The one in the corner, near the 10-inch circle, if that fills up, would it go towards, I guess, Atlas?
Yeah, actually, with the plan, I think especially there's having the curve in there and not putting the concrete, the Belgium blockers, it wouldn't have the spaghetti concrete that's in between blocks, so they have the opening in the box, so it will be able to find its way out there and then move down that way. But I can do, I think that would be the best way, because I don't think I have the change in elevation to put it on the full pipe out in the other direction.
I think the other, I think, was number three under my brain in the stormwater management report. Can the applicant also do, maybe, gain some sort of soil lock, make sure that everything is drained in that, in that parking lot?
Okay.
And show all existing utilities on the plans?
Okay. I, the only, okay, the only solution, new solution being going, actually, are now these front doors.
And I also, as Mr. O'Brien said, it does appear, when I was looking Google Maps, that there is some additional lands, some trees along the rear of the property. It's not really shown on the existing conditions plan, but if, if this, I also recommend that some, maybe a row, some sort of a row of landscaping along the rear part of the property being stowed. And I think my last comment is on the lighting, on page 4. It looks like not all of the isometric foot candles extend to the extent of the parking area zero along the rear. Not sure if that's just a, that...
Well, what happens is the program doesn't buy even in Jersey, so they have foot candles, so that really is covered, it's just, Shelkey cuts it off at 1, 0, 0.5.
There's a lot of lighting back there on that whole area, and when you go back there in the evening, back of the property to the south, to the west, have an awful lot of ambient lighting in that side. I looked at that as well, Mr. Cueto, and if it's right with the board, I don't see a reason to add anything more than what they're proposing.
I'm interested in that. Other than that, you mentioned the, your county of union applications pending, having submitted to... to the, to the approval? And have you submitted to the Silver Room?
Not yet.
And if RBSA applications are, I'd put that as well. And that's it for me.
Very good. Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Depp?
I do. Mr. Matt.
Come over here. It isn't better. We're in.
You got the best seat.
That's how I work it. Just as far as the, is that the continuation of the listed right of way that I'm seeing here? Is it right away up against the, the parking lot? So there would never be an issue as far as future access.
No. It's just a right of way against our property. And the curb, there's a radius of the curb there, it's just, it's depressed curb there.
And on the Atlas street side, that you, we're just improving this, but that right of way still remains or whatever that?
The right of way cuts up against our property to a certain extent. Really not that much, but it, the, that whole area there is treated after you look at it from the.
So the different, as far as emergency vehicles, would they, if someone inadvertently goes down Atlas Street, would they still have access or would they have to turn around?
They would have to turn around.
So, but right now, they're familiar with it being?
I don't think anyone uses it.
No one uses it?
I don't think so, no. The applicant doesn't use it, and that would really be one person who would.
You can go through it.
Can.
However, there was a question on the site plan, there's that little triangular area to the east of the Atlas right of way, which we were not quite positive along to the applicant.
It doesn't.
It doesn't. So it belongs to the neighbor to the south. So the, the actual access from the right of way of Atlas to this property is a couple of feet. So legally, there's no right of way going through. And by closing off the street, closing that off, that entry off with the arborvitae and the pavement that Mr. Cuero was talking about, this stops that delineates this Atlas property hang, keeps all of his operations on his land.
So no matter what, you know, the fire trucks got coming in from Columbus Avenue.
They're running over the arborvitae and they go.
Right.
They're, they're gonna, yeah, no matter what they've cut it. And most of the time, they don't want to get back close to go. But we'll leave them to do their work.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else on the board have anything for Mr. Depp?
I, I just want to confirm what I thought I heard. As far as new variances, not, not the ones that are existing and they're not going to be aggravated, but as far as new variances, was my understanding that the side yard setback to the south and combined setbacks?
Correct.
Both setbacks are the new variances?
That's correct. One side yard setback and the total side yard setback.
Okay. And the total, it actually looks to be improving?
Improving from all.
Over what was there? And the side yard setback on the south is slightly worse. That's all.
I would just like to agree with our professionals about, since it's a question of what's going on at five feet after our paving, whether that's this property's, the greenery that's there right now, the growth that's there right now, whether it's on this property or not. So if it's not, it could be taken away by the neighbor. So I would agree with them to have some landscaping across that back line.
This should be a form of grass or?
No. The planting that to match what's on the south side of it, that's proposed to the south of it.
The arborvitae?
Yes.
Kevin needs the arborvitae.
Well, whatever Kevin would prefer.
I do question whether they would grow here as a species, but if with your permission, Mr. Grumal, maybe the board will take a condition that they revise the landscaping plan and we'll work with the applicant on that.
And will all the landscaping, the irrigation be provided?
Other than naturally irrigated, as most landscaping is done.
Let's take a look at the plans that are proposed. Those that need irrigation, well, you put in your resolution that they provide it if necessary. But we'll try to do more drought resistance and shade resistance.
That's the two-year.
And the two-year guarantee.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay. Thank you. I am now, maybe some of your questions will be answered, but I'll, yeah, the applicant want to leave Fonseca, if you can square him in.
Could you raise your right hand, please, sir? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony when you're about to give Shelby the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you spell your, your first name and your, and your last name?
First name is W. Deppen, D. R. L. I., last name is Fonseca, O. N. S. C. A.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Fonseca, the applicant of the building is ASW Kitchens and Vast. Mr. Fonseca is the owner of ASW and also the owner of the building of the property. So that's why that's the connection. So, Mr. Fonseca, can you describe your operations and what you have at that property?
Well, basically, we sell kitchen cabinets and we do countertops. Countertops we cut and we buy this lab to cut in our location in the back. And cabinets, we just storage them between the delivery from factories and our delivery to our customer.
And what kind of shipments do you get into your, your property?
The most that we get there is small flatbed trucks that deliver this lab so stone.
Okay. And what comes out of your property?
Well, that would be the, the cutted stone usually is delivered with the small trucks, pickup trucks or small box trucks that we have.
That your company owns?
Yes.
That's your company owns?
Yes.
Okay. And you take the, where do you keep those trucks during the day?
Well, it's a pickup truck we keep inside the building. And that's the idea, we like to have the bigger building and then taller towards. And the box trucks we keep in our property, whether it's be parking in front of, right now it's parked on the side, our idea is this one we have the parking space, the park on the back.
Okay. And what is your reason for paving the back?
Well, we like to have more parking space in the back for our employees. The front, actually, there was a question about that, that the park in the front would be used for visitors of gas or people that come in to see our product. And the rear of the building will be used for, for our employees.
For your employees?
Yes.
So the people that visit you, that you have a storefront?
Yes.
Okay. But no storefront in the rear, is that correct?
No. It's just a warehouse.
Okay. So the people that would enter to follow up on, I think it was questions, questions, what, what people would be entering the front? Those are the visitors and your customers?
Just visitors and customers, yes.
Okay. And through the back is just?
Just employees.
Okay. And what are your hours, days of operation?
Monday to Friday, nine, eight to five.
Okay.
Saturdays only does the front store operates nine to three.
So only the showroom, you could say?
Only the showroom, yes. Only the showroom, nine to three, on Saturdays. Actually, we do close inside in the winter, but in the summer we do open. It depends on, you know, it's cold, people don't go out, so we close for, the showroom on Saturdays as well.
And how many employees do you have?
Right now, eight.
Eight employees?
Yes.
And are they full-time employees?
Six out there are full-time.
So they're there when the, your business is open all Monday through Friday?
Yes, Monday to Friday, eight to five.
And so what is the purpose of your building vision?
For, one of the reasons is we need more space as we get more comfortable, we need more space to storage for ideally, I would like to park one of our trucks inside as well.
What are your trucks inside the building and what would that, what purpose would that serve?
Basically, just to keep it inside the building, especially in the winter. If I had that building and it has to shovel, I wouldn't have that.
So you would be able to load and unload a little bit?
Inside the building, yes. Easier, actually, that's one of the good, good point. That's one of the things that we need, especially with cold days or rain days, we would like to use to be able to load it inside without having to go through.
And do you have any preference on landscaping?
Whatever, whatever the, the, the requires, I don't know.
Okay.
Brass will be much cheaper. I'll be able to grab, but if you buy something more expensive, I'll have to call the bank and ask for a big loan.
And then, so do you want to, there's a lot of talk about the trees in the back. So maybe you probably are more familiar with it than I am here.
There is, I believe there's two trees that is going to, that is turning on the property. There is referred trees all the way in the back, don't belong to it. It's not in our property, it's the, the neighbor's property.
Okay. And do you have any problem putting our old trees or trucks or?
Wherever you guys require, wherever it do require.
Um. And then you, and I know Ed explained the access from Atlas, but you also didn't really know that, that maybe what can be done. And you already, you didn't explain it to me.
Well, the Atlas access, we, legally, we don't have access there for driving because it's, we only have between the, our property, I believe it's only deeper about four or five feet than the neighbor's property. So the neighbor don't use, it's open right now, but it doesn't belong to us. That is, I believe it's the neighbor to the land, private property. It's, it's belonged to us. So I, other than walk in, that's the only access that we have through Atlas.
Okay. And how long have you been at this location?
Since 2010.
Okay. And you're planning to stay here for as long as you can?
I hopefully retire one day, but I have no plan yet, as of yet.
But that's why you're proposing the addition, because you'd like to grow, is that right?
Correct. That's the reasonable reason.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I leave Mr. Fonseca.
Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Cuero, any comments or questions for Mr. Fonseca?
No, Chairman, thank you.
You mentioned you had one pickup truck that you want to be able to store inside. And how many box trucks do you have currently?
We have two pickup trucks and then one box truck.
Okay.
Most of our delivery are done in pickup trucks, so it's.
And what's the maximum amount of employees you have during a typical day?
Eight.
So would, would there be able to, would eight employees be able to park in the back while the pickup trucks and the box trucks would be sufficient?
Well, if we've got a truck, we can park inside, maybe yes, to answer your question, yes. That we plan to park, propose to park in there.
I have anything else?
Okay. Thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Fonseca?
I've just got a question, it's probably mine, it might have been already covered. The way, after the proposed change, are we going to see a significant amount of traffic, different types of traffic coming down Columbus Avenue? Is it, like, right now, are vehicles getting into the back through Atlas?
Well, no. Usually they come from Columbus.
So you're doing Columbus right now?
Yes.
And this change won't really drastically affect, maybe a little bit, but not the, yeah.
Because it's already an existing.
Yeah, because, yeah, because there's other, a lot of things going on over there. So I'm just checking that out. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Depp?
I have a question, sorry. And I might have a question. Go ahead.
Mr. Fonseca, in the event the board approves this, you mentioned you have six full-time employees and two part-time employees, and you, that you want to grow. You anticipate having more employees in the not-too-distant future? Not, what you're looking at is your max, maximum?
Well, right, probably it would be our max right there, because, I mean, I was hoping to have a lot of employees, but I don't have the business for that at the moment.
All right. Has your, has your parking that you were proposing, has that anticipated some sort of mild increase in employees? Is that built into your plan here or?
I, no, I'm getting it, I'm on voice. Well, we have, it's wonderful where our version there.
Did anyone else have for the second, for Mr. Fonseca? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Couple, but comparing on that, you have seven spots right now. So the six employees and two trucks, unless you're parking the trucks in the loading zone.
Well, we do have parking, our trucks, we have current park on the side of the building. We do have parking in the back, which it's grumbled, it's not paved, but we do have parking there. And we occasionally use it.
I'm just looking at, you know, the proposed parking. So, I guess there's room for the trucks in the, in the loading zone.
I believe the proposed parking rear will be another eight or nine.
Eight?
Eight. I'm sorry. Yeah, eight or nine.
I guess that, okay, that last one is a spot still. Okay. Okay. You're not knocking down the building, you're knocking down two sides of it and adding to it.
At that, I have to check if the existing foundation is, I'm not playing to knock down the building, but at the same time, I have to, we have to see that the existing foundation is, it's in good condition. I believe, I don't know, bad, it probably would translate to that bad than I, or data.
And?
What was the question? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Going by the drawings, you're knocking down parts of the existing building.
Right.
I'm asking, are, are you knocking the building down? Because you're, it's drawn as existing block and new block to match existing, but again, this building's been there a couple of years. And codes are from then to now have changed and, and walked in now, so.
Yeah.
But, and just, I also.
Would that make it a role for your architect to address that way?
Yes.
I don't want the board to be, the board and/or the zoning officer to be surprised all of a sudden when this building comes down. And if this building comes down and gets rebuilt as it's shown on these drawings, because the board may then at that point would have liked to ask the question, if, if we suspect it has to come down, can be, can there be any more elimination of the setback issues? And not that we're pushing, we're glad to hear improving your building and improving the building in the gateway and getting it better. But we'd also like to know the answer, because it's like, okay, this is what you're doing. And yes, we do have, you do have to knock it down to make this work. And you may not have that answer right now. But asking the question so that we understand it, so that there aren't any surprises if the building happens to come down.
I did not plan, it's not my plan to take, to knock down the building. I hope I don't have to do that.
You're going to have to go back to the bank again.
The mortgage is going to be bigger than what I was wanting. But at the same time, we don't want to put, if an issue comes up that, I believe we have to address.
Sometimes it's easier to knock it down than to reinforce what you have, but your architect can address it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I'll ask the attorney, is it within the board's right to, to put a condition in the approval, assuming that it were to be granted, that if it's knocked down, they have to come back?
If it's knocked down and they're doing something, we're going under the assumption that this is going to remain and be?
Correct.
Tweeted.
Yep.
If it comes down, at a minimum, you may have to come back to the board if you're going to change anything on site, if you're going to build the exact same thing, we're still going to probably want to see what it's going to look like. And maybe you can, maybe you can reduce some of the setbacks. It's sort of, if you have a problem? It's sort of, if you don't have a problem with adding that just as a safety measure?
No, I, because I think we, I think it'd be impossible to build it exactly how it is and.
Yeah, so if it comes down, there may be no variances needed.
Right.
Or there may be more, depending, the parking may be different, so if you have to knock it down, you may want to.
You mean by knocking, you mean completely?
Yeah.
That's a no.
That's a no, okay. We, the board may want to condition that if that happens, and unlikely when it happens, revisit us and then let's see where we're going to go.
Because we had a building just down the street that ended up in that fashion, and this board didn't, this was before most of us were probably on this board, but it, it got approved, then the building ended up getting knocked down because of structural concerns that they uncovered during construction, and it got rebuilt in the same spot with no ability of this board to say anything, so we don't want to see that happen again.
Chances are it's not going to happen, but just in case.
I'm hoping that I don't leave.
Mr. Haele, can you?
We, we understand, I can say, you probably said that because something happened, something.
I believe, I believe that the base and, what I, the base and our proposal, the only walls that we're likely to get down is just the rear wall, because it's going to be one big warehouse.
Right. This is only if the whole building is loaded.
Yeah, that's, well.
The rear.
Yeah, certainly just the front, yeah, and the back, yeah.
Okay, and the only other, anybody else on the board have any questions?
The only other question I had relates again to kind of the trucks, you know, I have some concern, you say you have three trucks now, I don't know if there's any, you know, possibility of additional company vehicles being there, but I for one don't want to see them parked in the front of the building when you're not in operation, so that that becomes, you know, all weekend long, we're seeing box trucks and pickups along the front facade of that building, so I just want some assurance that you will always have your company vehicles either parked on the side or the rear of the property.
Or, well, that's, our, our proposal is state that our loading door is going to be in the back.
Right, what I'm saying, they're, you know, for convenience, people just decide, know what, I'm going to park the truck here, and, you know, come in on Monday morning, it's right there in front, get in and go, you know, kind of thing. So these things tend to happen.
So they're not parking in the front, you don't want parking?
Like, not, well. When they're not in operation, right, when they're not in operation, that company vehicles will not be parked in the public vehicle.
No commercial vehicles in the front.
Exactly, thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
That can be added as a condition.
Very good.
I'm with that.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, thanks. We now have Mr. Buckman. Are you ready?
Usually that's reported.
I don't know if he wants to.
With regard to this application, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, if you got it?
Yes, I do.
State your name and last name, please.
David Buckman, B-U-C-K-M-A-N.
Thank you.
Mr. Buckman, can you give the board the privilege of your background expertise, licenses?
Yeah, I am, I'm, I graduated from the Pratt Institute in 1985. And I'm licensed in about 20 states, one of which is New Jersey, number 11, A.O.C.
And have you testified in front of many painting board, sewing boards?
Yes, I have.
Okay, I offer Mr. Buckman as an expert in architecture.
Very good, you may proceed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry I'm late. I imagine you went through the building, I'll go through it quickly.
And we have these plans, correct, Mr. Buckman?
These, yeah, I'm referring to Plan PB1, which is what you guys have. And so it basically shows, there's a, there's a dotted line to try to see where the existing building is and then the new portion. To answer the question that you asked about keeping existing walls, great question, I wish I knew the answer right now. We do intend on keeping, they look like they're in good shape, we will have to do some reinforcing based on code changes since, if they have to come down, well, we, we will, we hope at least to keep the footings, but I, I have a feeling we'll be able to keep, the walls are in pretty good shape, so we intend on doing our best to keep them. So basically, the warehouse area, warehousing area will be in the back, we're not touching the front on Michigan Avenue. The storefront, I mean, the, the showroom area will remain the same, and everything will be, really, most of the stuff that's changing, all the stuff that's changing will be towards the rear of the building, those, those small streets in the back. The height will remain the same, which is 25, yeah, 25 foot six, we intend on keeping that the same as we add on to the building in the back. There'll be a couple overhead, a new overhead door in the back, and that's where all, really, all the action will be. The customers will be off of Michigan Avenue going into the showroom, and the, the work and the cabinetry and granite work will be all in the back, off the back streets. Basically, you have the chart with the coverages and things, we do plan all, so we do plan, one issue is continuing the north end wall, just to keep going straight and it isn't existing, side setback variance, so we will continue to have that. Any questions?
I think so, I think you, I mean, we talked about landscaping, I know you were talking about landscaping. I mean, I, I'm happy to open it up for the question.
Yeah, I was going to, I mean, if, you know, we don't force you to ask questions or give official testimony that you don't have, in which case I will open it to Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Cuero for, you know, for their questions or comments.
And I, I'm sorry, I did, I do have, we will be replacing, one of the notes, comments was about lighting, we're going to replace the new existing lighting with new LED lighting and adding another, an additional light. And of course, those will be shielded to protect neighbors' lives.
Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Cuero?
My questions are answered previously.
Mr. Cuero, same. Anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Buckman?
One second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think my experts did a great job, I think this is a great project. Mr. Fonseca is definitely, as you can see, one of the best in his property, grows business, and that's right from that gateway overlay entrance, so he's open to whatever landscaping that we agree upon, the professionals, the board, and whatever he needs to do, and I think this is going to look great. So thank you so much for your time.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing to the public. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting, or the hearing is open to the public, if there's anyone out there who would like to step forward to grant their opinions for or against this application, please step forward. Seeing no one, I will entertain a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
So moved.
Okay, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is ended.
Okay. Do we have a list of conditions?
Yes.
Yeah, what we have in front of us, I don't know what your normal procedure is, what we have in front of us is an application for preliminary and final site plan approval with, what I understand, are two new variances. There are existing variances, shortcomings that are not going to be aggravated, the two new variances involve side yard setback to the south, and the total side yard setback, which is actually improving, although it's deficient, it's less deficient than it was. The conditions that I have.
Mr. Raygo, before you go to conditions, if I may, there is a new variance with parking because we are increasing the square footage of the building, so.
Okay.
I believe that.
I thought they needed, they need 16, they need 14 and they're providing 16.
Right.
Okay, my mistake, sorry. Scratch that.
With regard to conditions, generally, we have the report from Harbor, and we have the report from Shamrock. Both consultants went through those reports, and I did not hear any news from the applicant. They, they focused on flexibility in landscaping, mainly toward the rear with a two-year guarantee, irrigation only if necessary, there was, and we're going to leave the landscaping basically to the review of the board consultants, if the building comes down, the board would like to take another look if it's at all going to change, but that's, that's down the road. If commercial vehicle, vehicles are not in operation, they're not to park in the, in the front. There are a number of other conditions set forth in the reports, and the applicant does need to obtain the appropriate approvals from County, Somerset Union Soil Conservation, our Building Department, Railway Valley Sewerage Authority, and I usually put conditions in, they're very general in terms of if, if those conditions change this plan significantly, they need to come back. And there's some other things as, as well, that's the thrust of what I have.
In the past, this board has delineated conditions specifically, keeping the resolution so that it's all in one spot. If the board wishes to change that, of course, you're free to do that.
No, I don't believe so.
I'll pull out jams from the reports and, and put those specifically in the resolution, rather than just say, this report and that report.
I can, I can note them on the record if the chair wishes, and that's.
Very well.
Because Mr. Raygo, Mr. Cuero, myself will get them in writing.
Yep.
Make sure I cover your report.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, we're starting the conditions.
I have a question on it.
Sure. I'm sorry, Chair.
That's fine, go ahead.
You just said irrigation if needed, so.
I thought that's what I heard, but I heard natural irrigation, AKA rain, but I also heard if needed, I thought, but I don't know if that.
I was just want that clarified, or how do we determine when it's?
Kevin, do you have sense now?
It's not when Kevin goes out there and says if needed. No, that's okay.
He's a very reasonable guy.
I know. Yeah, whatever the reason, I think we can talk about it after.
The board, board members mentioned if needed, I happen to think that's a good idea at the very bottom of everything, but Mr. Cuero and I have designed these things over the years, tried to take advantage of drop-resistant, shade-resistant plants, and we'll do our very best to make something work for the applicant that will not be excessive, and will not add to the loan that he has to take out.
Okay.
But if, the bottom line is absolutely no way to avoid this, it would be good to have that language in there, and if the applicant does not approve of what we propose, they can come back to this board and say what they are suggesting is unreasonable, we'd like you to reconsider it, so there's, there's an appeal to that.
Do you want me to say if absolutely necessary rather than if necessary? I'm sure that would make Meredith feel better, but it's up to you, Kevin.
You are the escort, fire away.
Okay, all right, conditions.
The other conditions are provide truck turning template, provide the curving detail on Columbus, place all entries on the site plan, revise the scale on sheet two, provide soil log, show existing utilities, provide soil erosion application, provide stop signs slash stop bar on Columbus and North Michigan, provide recharge calculations, here we go, drainage to Atlas shown to the engineer's satisfaction. That's all I have.
That's everything except for the landscaping.
Add the landscape, we've got it right.
If you could, if you could, I have your report, if you can flag those in your report, because I think they're already flagged, but I want to make sure we're on the same page. If you can flag those and get it to me within the next couple of days.
Yes, sir.
Or handwrite it, then I'd like to make sure I plug it in.
Those are the conditions, Pfeifer, Mr. Cuero, so.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
What do you wish to consider them or not?
Do you want to, Mr. Raygo?
I got it.
Okay, so at this time, is there anyone on the board who would like to entertain a motion to either approve or deny this application?
I'd like to make a motion to approve it based upon the conditions just read into the record.
Very good, thank you, Mr. O'Neal, does someone like to second?
I'll second.
Okay.
The voting number's eight.
We have eight voting numbers present, correct. Okay.
Mr. Schultze?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Patare?
Yes.
Mr. Genalchi?
Yes.
Mr. Zadadi?
Yes.
Mr. Colao?
Yes.
Mr. Mattio?
Yes.
And Mr. Dern?
Yes.
The application has been approved, congratulations. All right, I'm going to move on with our agenda, if that's okay. Next item is if anyone from the board has any comments for the good of the board or the bad.
For the bad of the board. It's on the agenda.
Anyone? Okay, seeing no one, I will now entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, okay, at this time, the meeting is open to the public, if there's anyone who would like to come forward to address the board on any matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I entertain a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Everyone wants to stay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, meeting's adjourned.